Email you about it tomorrow. I guess clearing up the title for the groups. What kind of said to talk to you and what accounts to pay out of. But I still need to add them as vendor who press the P O. I figured that you can just fill that in.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what account.
He said it should be city from all one nineteen forty.
Okay, good evening. It's seven o'clock. Are we ready to start the council meeting?
We're ready on I T end.
Okay.
I already see one councilman.
Oh, I see him off. It's the one that counts, so it's okay.
Oh, okay, we are here. Super.
I don't see Dusty, but I thought I heard him earlier.
Let me check the participant list.
She says his name. There's a there is Harkner. This is a little picture coming up yet. Are you muted?
Nice echo.
Otherwise, it'd be like really bad feedback.
You're not muted, Dave, because we can hear you.
That was hilarious. Are you moving it, dude? Yes.
My little microphone's off.
No, but on my.
I think you picked up on Jarvis.
Yeah, we are. We are in a conference room, so.
So so my I am muted, but Jarvis not.
Oh, Dusty. With Barbara.
How you doing, Phil?
Good. How are you guys?
Okay, so so Conrad will go get the councilman Riggsby a laptop, so he's on his way.
He's he's there. He can see it here at this point.
You can start.
Councilman Riggsby is here.
Okay, super.
Let's let's do the call to order, Barbara.
Okay. Councilman Gendol. Councilman Leonard. Councilman Riggsby. Mayor Pro Tempore Daley. And Mayor Duper.
Present.
And we're all present. Thank you.
Thank you. And we didn't have a closed session. Councilman Riggsby is going to give us the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, where's the flag?
I don't know, but I've I've got. I they can't see it, though.
Okay, let's start with the invocation. Okay, everybody bow your heads with me. Dear Lord, thank you so much for keeping us safe. And those who haven't been saved, please be with their families. And help us to lead this city in the way we can. Use this name. Amen. Okay, let's pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America. Which stands or which stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
I believe we did have one public comment in the form of an email. Barbara, do we want to note that? Read it? Did everybody get it?
I will. I all of the council members should have gotten it, as well as Conrad, Jarv, and the city attorney. It is from Mr. Joe Frank. He asked the question regarding the Adobe. He's asking, once the Adobe is sold to the sole owner, and what is that expected date? I don't know if Conrad wants to respond to that.
Well, Conrad went to get the computer, so I will respond. The 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 sole or the area D property was completed at the last city council meeting, so it's pretty much a done deal. So but the city is still going to help maintain just the Orange Grove and 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 do the minimum. But what Mr. Joe Frank want is for us to repair the house, so we cannot do it at this time, so.
They have an agreement with the purchaser. We're executing that will give us rights to go in there and do all the repairs as if it were our own property. But we've gone. We've gone through the trouble to make sure that we can take care of that building while it's in transition.
Right, and I know his his question specifically, as I read it, is about who the ownership belongs to. And without getting into too much detail, just for everyone, so we're all on the same page. In the process of selling it, again, because it was part of the the old area D. It wasn't even ours. I V D A property wasn't even ours technically, so when it's sold, it is now owned by the new landowner. However, the process that is that is in place is that that will be coming back to us as donated park space, correct, Conrad?
Correct, correct. It's on eye point now. And as part of their development agreement, they will return that to us as a park.
Right, so so right now, while it's in transition, it is owned by the developer, but it will be coming back to us at some point. And we do have easement to get to it, should we need to do anything with it right now.
We have a license agreement that that we're completing with the the buyer to give us access to maintain it and and keep it up and water the trees. Make sure it doesn't get any worse than what it is before we can get our hands on it and fix it.
Okay, and then the other two questions are more procedural, and and then there's a legal question that I think that the attorney was weighing in on. So I'm not sure if we want to address that now or move forward with our other agenda items.
I think they're both. I think they're both related to items that are on the agenda regarding the increasing the number of members on the historic commission. And then I think his last question was regarding the certificate of appropriateness for item item number one on the agenda.
Yes, that's my understanding also, so.
We can address those at that point.
Okay, all right. So with that being said, it looks like we can probably move into item number one.
So. Conrad, are you ready? Okay, here's come out. Okay. Number one, the power source.
Are you muted? Sorry, get on.
Yes.
Okay, I think Lorena Lorena is going to do the presentation on this.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Good evening, Mayor Duper, council members, members of the public that are watching online. My name is Lorena Materita, and I am the Associate Planner for the City of Loma Linda. And tonight, the planning division has two presentations. The first one is for a precise plan of design application for the future Central Park and Oak Woodland Preserve in the Groves at Loma Linda specific plan area. The applicant is the City of Loma Linda, and the developer is High Point Communities. And we are proposing to develop Planning Area Three Four of the Groves at Loma Linda specific plan as a fifteen point nine acre community park that will include construction of a twenty five hundred square feet fire station, a forty five hundred square feet community center with ability of a two thousand square feet expansion, a tot lot, and open space areas for multiple purposes. In addition, the project will extend into the Oak Woodland Preserve, a three acre, three acre overlay area within Planning Area Three Three. The project proponent will also install pedestrian passels, landscaping and site improvements, and preserve the existing oak trees. To give you an idea of the existing setting, the area is east of Bryn Mawr Avenue, west of California Street, and is intersected by Park Avenue. The lots south of Park Avenue previously had a citrus grove, and lots north of Park Avenue have existing oak trees. The general plan is special Planning Area D, and it is zoned planned community. As stated before, it's within the specific plans, the Groves at Loma Linda, Phase Three Concept Area. It is on Planning Area Three Four and Planning Area Three Three of the specific plan. The designated land use is Central Park and Oak Woodland Preserve. Surrounding uses in that area, if you recall, not too long ago, you approved the fifty seven condo project. That's going to be just west and adjacent to Central Park. The lots east is the future North Park, currently being developed by Lennar. There's also right northeast of it is the two hundred and thirteen senior living housing units that you approved, along with the fifty seven condo project. Just south of it, southeast is the Lennar Citrus Trails Home. And not too far north of the project northwest is the previously approved Amelioratory Care Center, which was the Phase One project of the Grove specific plan. So to give you some background and history, in two thousand eight, this planning commission and city council approved and adopted the Grove at Loma Linda specific plan. It was a city initiated project for a three hundred acre site located entirely within Special Planning Area D of the general plan land use map. At the time, an environmental impact report and mitigation measures were adopted. This past summer, city staff met and entered into negotiations with High Point Communities to sell and develop the Phase Three Concept Area, which was primarily owned by the city. High Point will be developing the two parks within Phase Three area as part of the sales agreement. In November and December, staff met with Historical Commission and Planning Commission. And at Planning Commission, changes were requested by the commissioners and incorporated into this new final design, so. So now we're here with the latest version for city council's final ratification. So again, on to continue with background and history, this is a copy of the original design. We've gone through numerous iterations, and in terms of this and this design, the first one, it included more concrete. It wasn't. There wasn't as much connectivity as we like. We wanted to see the fire department that they were proposing connected to the Oak Preserve, and we wanted an actual trail to connect into the Preserve. And 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 you'll see in the next couple of slides, some of the many changes that they made before we got to what what we're going to show you at the end of this presentation. Next slide. So just one more time to repeat, we took it to Historical Commission, and we took it twice to Planning Commission for their review and comments. All of their comments and recommendations were incorporated into the final design. So these images just show an overlay on top of the original plan and what was changed since the November and December meetings. Next slide. So here we have a full view of the final Central Park and Oak Woodland Preserve. Again, this is for the entitlement of the park program. In in this design, we're going to see south of Park Avenue is the is the central park. North of Park Avenue is the Oak Woodland Preserve. And we're going to go deeper into each section in the next few slides, but this is just to give you an overall idea of what the whole concept and the program is going to look like and what it's adjacent to. So you see, like I said earlier, it's going to be adjacent right next to the North Park, which is being designed by Citrus Trails, Lennar. And the senior apartments are going to be adjacent to the Oak Woodland, the Oak Woodland Preserve. And again, like I stated before, there's going to be a lot of connectivity between all these areas, the future retail, the residential, and these two parks, they're not going to be. They are going to be two separate parks, but they're going to be. They're just. They're going to have amenities and features that that match, and so that way it can be a perfect balance between the two. So access to the park will come through Redlands Boulevard, Park Avenue, Citrus Avenue, and Bryn Mawr. Bryn Mawr will be the main access to Central Park, as you can sort of see right here to the west of Central Park is the entrance to the main parking lot. And in that main parking lot, we're also going to see a drop off and pickup turnout area for parents that come drop off their their kids at soccer games or other sports activities. Next, next slide. So here we're zooming in on the Oak Woodlands Preserve. I will. It was. It's going to incorporate all of the existing oak trees on site, and if any maintenance need to be done, the developer would be doing maintenance on any of the trees as well. We're going to see a pedestrian passail with decomposed granite, a dry creek bed with sycamore trees and native grasses surrounding it. And as I mentioned before, we're going to see connections to all future retail and residential and and to the adjacent apartments. Next slide. Here's the zoomed in image of Central Park. Now here, we're going to have a little bit more details and amenities in this park. So on the north, north side, just south or the north side of the park, just south of Park Avenue and adjacent to it, we see the new proposed fire station. One of the changes that Planning Commission recommended was to move it slightly to the west, that instead of the fire station connecting to the Oak Woodland Preserve, now we have this new passail, this new trail that just naturally connects to the Preserve, and it won't stop the flow of pedestrian traffic right there. So that was one of the planning commission's recommendations.
Can you use your cursor to show us precisely what you're talking about?
Unfortunately, I don't have control of the screen. Our I T guy does. So but I'm going to try to better explain to it then. So what if you see.
Where is the fire station?
Where Park Avenue is at, there is one a red and square image. That is the fire station, and thank you, Kyle. So that's the fire station and the fire station parking area and facility. So what Planning Commission, to the right of that, you now see Parkway and Oak Grove. You see where the cursor is at? So that's where the fire station used to be, which didn't, for the planning commission commission for a design standpoint, that didn't make sense. We it made sense to have trails connecting directly to the to the pedestrian, I mean, to the preserve instead of a fire station truck going out that way. So that's that's the fire station. The community center is the other red box that is adjacent to Bryn Mawr Avenue. Okay, so next to that community, the center, there's going to be room for future two thousand square foot expansion when we get to that phase. But right now with that, the area surrounding the community center, we're also going. It's also going to be allowing outdoor patio area, barbecue, a trellis, just more areas for people to meet. And just directly northeast of the community center, there's a circular image. That's going to be the future tot lot area. And now these other lawns, these other lawns, we have the main lawn, the flexible lawn. And then we have the which will house the soccer field. There is room for picnic, for farmer's market event space. And just to the northwest corner on Park Avenue and Bryn Mawr Avenue, that area is going to be a community center activity lawn, and it will also serve as a water quality basin area. So it's going to have multiple purposes in that area. And all throughout each park will also see. What do we say? Just like I said, connectivity to each park and areas and a rock basin water areas. Okay, I think we can move to the next slide, Kyle. So. That's where all the what water runoff from the development is supposed to go to. And there's also going to be, and I can't think of the name right.
It's a detention basin.
There you go, detention. Okay, so. Sorry. So in in terms of the fire station and community center, council is not approving the architecture of the building design tonight. Instead, what we're looking at is the park program to allow construction of a future fire station and community center within the historical district and the park. The architectural style and the design of the structures will go before council prior to building permit issuance at a later time. But these next few slides are going to give you an idea of what we plan to construct in the park. So on the left side is just ideas of fire stations, and on the right side are ideas of our future community center. Next slide. And here we go again, images of what the pedestrian passail might look like. Oh, the dry creek bed, that was the word I was looking for when I was showing you the image of the park, and I was trying to explain the basin. There's also going to be a dry creek bed with sycamore trees and native grasses surrounding it. Another way to help with the control of the water. Next slide. Images examples of the future tot lot area when I showed you that it was going to be in that circular area, and that's where we intend to place it. And these are just images of what we imagine to see when the main lawn and the flexible use lawn are built. So in terms of the environmental and traffic review, as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, an environmental impact report for the Groves was adopted in June of two thousand eighteen, along with mitigation monitoring reporting program. And that listed requirements for all future projects. All required studies such as traffic, cultural, air quality, noise, they were conducted for the specific plan and those specific sites. So the site was previously analyzed with the adoption of the E I R. In addition, because parks are local serving land uses, a vehicle miles traveled analysis was not warranted. Therefore, the submittal is exempt, and no further environmental review is necessary. The adopted mitigation measures for this specific site will continue to apply, as well as the standard conditions of approval for this application submittal. Further, Sequel Guideline Section fifteen one eighty two states, where a public agency has prepared an E N R, an E I R on a specific plan, no E I R or negative declaration need be prepared for project undertaken pursuant to and in conformity to that plan. Public hearing notices were mailed out and posted on December seventeen, two thousand twenty, and no responses were received in favor or opposition of the project when this presentation was drafted. Next slide. So to conclude, the city and developer have made every effort possible to provide the most appropriate design and layout. It complies with the goals of the general plan and the Groves as specific, the Groves at Loma Linda specific plan. It is compatible with existing and future uses in the area. Conditions are in place to ensure appropriate compliance with mitigations and city standard. And findings were provided in support of the current proposal and approval. Staff and the planning commission are recommending city council determine the project is exempt from Sequel, ratify the certificate of appropriateness for precise plan of design, number P twenty one fifty six, and approve precise plan of design to develop planning areas three, four, and three, three with the two parks. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions, and so is the developer and Conrad.
Before we get too far on this, can you bring up the overview of the entire site, please, Kyle? And Lorena did a great presentation. I just kind of want to put it into a little bit of context. The two pages down. That one. So she she talked about the dry creek bed a little bit, and for us, that's a really important part of the project, because if you look in the bottom left hand corner, you kind of see those trees down there. And the idea is we'll have a creek creek bed begin there and then kind of snake up along that path of the trees with bigger and denser trees working its way up past the community center, up around the fire station until it finally turns into, no, on the inside, Kyle. There you go. Until it finally turns into an extension of the trees now across the street, so it feels like a progression going through. And then into the Oak Park, well, Woodlands Park, we're looking for ballard lighting so that everything's underlit, that it's a really comfortable, natural feel. And then when you get up to the very top up there in the top left hand corner of the Oak Park, you can kind of see that the little bit of stuff sticking out to the left. And what we're envisioning is is that a commercial area kind of picks up that dry space and then has restaurants or something along a little bit of a water feature or something to tie the park and the commercial and the residential into one piece. So I think this is a great opportunity to tie the entire community together.
Okay.
That's it. I just want to. Other than that, Lorena did an excellent job. Thank you.
Well, before we get too much further, this is a public hearing, so why don't we open the public comment to make sure we don't have any comments there first, and then we can debate with the council. So we're opening the public comment. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this specific agenda item?
You wish to speak, speak, please use your raise hand function or message me directly in chat through Zoom.
Mayor Duper, we do have the one comment from Mr. Joe Frank. Are you able to hear me?
Yes. Do you want to read that, Barbara?
Yeah, he's indicating that there was no approval by the Historic Commission as required by the G S P of Area D. Because there was decorum at the November and December meetings of the Historic Commission, he's asking, is the city council able to override that, or should it go back to the Historic Commission?
Richard, Rich, you want to take a stab at it? Rich, you want to take a stab at it?
Yes, good evening. My understanding is that the specific plan did receive a certificate of appropriateness previously after review by the historic commission. This particular park programming document would arguably fall within the scope of that previous review. But it's important to point out that the historic commission itself is a body that's created with certain specific delegated authorities from the city council. But the city council retains the ultimate authority to approve or disapprove, or in this case, to ratify a certificate of appropriateness. So the failure of the historic commission to take a further review of this matter tonight is probably something that would be deemed a disapproval at worst. And the matter would then be forwarded to the city council, which is what's happened basically. So it is before the city council tonight with your ultimate authority to issue or ratify a further certificate of appropriateness. Whether or not that's actually required, it's certainly appropriate to do that. Ultimately, though, the final development of the project and the buildings and specific developments will go back through that same historic review process. So this intermediary step, I think it's within the council's discretion to go ahead and take an action tonight based upon the prior input that was received from the historic commission and the fact that it will go back to them later. So to summarize, you may go forward tonight if that's your choice.
Thank you. Barbara, were there any other commenters or?
Let me, Kyle would know if anybody's wanting to.
No one mentioned anything in Zoom. We're good.
Okay. Okay, so we'll close the public comment and open it up to discussion from the council.
All right, I have a few questions.
Okay, and I also see Mayor Protem Daly also has a couple of questions also. So go ahead, Mr. Jendel.
All right, well, we'll take turns. So I'll start with a question. So in regards to what we're approving today, are we just approving the general plan? So saying that there will be the overlay area, the passails landscaping? Or are we also approving some of the specifics that are laid out?
You're approving the concept that there will be a oak park with trails, a dry creek bed, a fire station of some sort, a community room of some sort and grass areas that more or less resemble what you're seeing here. But beyond that, there's still some malleabilities, especially when we get into the buildings, the parking lots and the hard structure construction.
So a good portion of it could actually be changed a month, two months from now.
There's always the ability to amend something, wholesale amend it. Or in the process, there will be, you know, these are high, very high level design concepts. So there will be some modification as we go forward, just as part of the construction process.
Mayor Protem Daly?
Oh, go ahead. Finish your questions.
Okay. One thing on page seven, so we're talking about native landscaping. Is, do we have some kind of guarantee or provision to make sure that 70% or higher or some kind of number is going to be native or Californian friendly landscaping?
Yeah, they have to get a blueprint passed us. And without our approval, it ain't going forward.
Got it. Okay, and then on page eight, we're talking about the traffic impact analysis. Are we saying that this will not result in net traffic change?
That's correct, because we're not, the park as it's designed, it's a community park, so it's not a regional park. Therefore, people will not be coming from Apple Valley or Palm Springs or Riverside to go use this park. Whatever traffic will be generated will be generated on a local basis and therefore it's local circulation.
Okay. And then I'm looking at the conditions of approval. On number 26, we're talking about including infrastructure for the Loma Linda Connected Community Program. General question for that, are we able to offer public wifi at this park? Is that something that has been discussed?
That's pretty granular at this point, but I would anticipate that at least around the community building, there would be some form of a wifi access, probably not park wide, but probably closer to the fire station, the community building, there will be.
Got it. And then my last question would be from the page 93, where we're talking about the nesting birds. Is that relevant to this park? Do we have?
Not anymore. The trees are gone.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ron, did you have some questions?
Yeah, I had a couple, couple of questions. One is, in the maps, I didn't see any provisions for Redlands School District. Where are we at with that? Because I knew it was going to happen, then I heard it wasn't going to happen. I'm not sure where we're at with that and how it would impact this.
The proposed Redlands School is to the far west, way about where the. The writing is on the left-hand side of the page, way on the left border of the page.
Yeah, no, I understand, but they'd have to go through what we're talking about.
No, the Redland School will have access off of Mission Road with a bus access off of Park. So right where the roundabout, which is not going to be a roundabout, that would be the bus route into the top end of the school. There will be not, will not be parent pickup and drop off on the internal side. Pickup and drop off was planned to be on Mission Road.
So they'll all line up in front of Phil's house?
Yes, he can hand out cookies in the morning.
Yeah, there you go. What's the status of that, though? I mean, because I think the last thing I heard is that Redlands School District didn't think this would be an adequate size lot for what they need.
The last thing we heard is that it's substandard for a middle school at this point and that the district does not have any funding for new school construction. That was one of the reasons why they renovated a mission elementary, because they had money for renovation and remodel. So at this point, it's a vacant piece of land that.
We don't know what's going to happen with it.
We have no idea what the school district's going to do. If they end up disposing of it, then it would fit into the larger lot to the south of the park there. So we've done some really, really high level thought on, you know, how things would tie together. But that's really more dreaming than actually even putting pencil to paper.
What's the timeframe we're looking at when they need to make a decision? Or we need them to make?
At any point. We've kind of tied with the park extension, the extension of park and the way we have the large lot pieces tied in. It could happen at any point. We're not going to be dependent on them for anything happening.
So we move forward. So what you're proposing is we move forward with the plan that's proposed right now, irrespective of what happens with the Redlands.
That's correct.
Doesn't make me any more comfortable, but at least I understand it. The second issue is a little more touchy, and that is fire department. Is this new proposed fire station replacing fire station number two?
Yes, let me answer this one, because based on the study that we just did and we presented to the city council, I think it was a couple of months ago, right now the city only called for two station. And since this project, again, it can be for future expansion too. But right now, it's for, it's already planned for two station.
So let me jump in here. That has not been decided yet.
Right, right.
That is not a direction the city is taking at this point. That was a recommendation by a study based on calls for service and manpower. I think that's more of a political discussion, Ron, and I think that's ultimately up to all of us. We ultimately have the mandate to provide service to the residents of our city. And so I think we have to evaluate the appropriateness of where we have fire stations and how they serve. So just because there was a study, let's not get, let's not say that that is the direction we are going, because that is absolutely not. I'm not saying it isn't. I'm not saying it is. I'm saying that's something that has to be determined by the council. So before we get people worried and worked up that are watching this online, it's always been in the plan as we developed Area D. Because of the increased amount of homes and businesses there, we were going to have to provide a level of fire service. So as that all develops out, we're going to have to evaluate that. Right now, we don't know what's going to be there. So we can't make a determination on the appropriateness of what our fire coverage looks like at this point. So.
But you're asking me to vote on a decision before we have the facts.
Well, real quick, let me get some that may help you, Councilman Daly, is we have an opportunity to have a fire station constructed for us. Whether that is a new fire station or whether that's a replacement fire station is immaterial. We're getting a free fire station, because there's two possible scenarios. One is that we close the existing station two and turn this into station two, and we got a brand new free fire station.
Right.
And the other scenario is, is that at some point it's determined that we need three stations and we have an existing brand new fire station. Either way, we've got a brand new fire station.
And who makes that determination?
You will, well, council will.
Okay.
But that's not, I mean, that's not a decision to make tonight. The decision is.
I understand.
You want a fire, do you want a free fire station?
Yeah, I am, sure. Who wouldn't want a free fire station? But, but once you have a fire station, you have to pay to sustain it. And that's where my issue is.
And that's then, at that point, the council will have to decide whether they're, you know, we're a three-station city or a two-station city. And the guys that wear blue and collar brass make those decisions on me.
And I just am, have difficulty making decisions without the facts. And what you're telling me is the facts are coming and you can make a decision once you get the facts. But that's not a comfortable position for me.
Well, one way or another, you're going to need a new fire station. The existing station two is a mobile home and a metal butler building. That while not at the end of life or at some point in the next decade or so, probably going to hit end of life.
Yeah.
We will need a replacement fire station. Or the other option is, is we will need three fire stations and we need a replacement fire station.
Yeah.
We just need to be careful and not get off into the weeds on this, because this is directly related to the deal that we made with the developer. So we need to be careful and not debate the merits of what we need when we're talking about, as Conrad said, something that was part of our negotiation. So again, all that has to be determined in the future. But I just want to make it clear as people are watching, especially folks on our north side, about shutting anything down. We're not talking about anything like that at this point. That's not, that's not even appropriate to even discuss. So we need to be real careful.
And I respect that, Phil. I really do. But making decisions without knowing what the, what the facts are or the probabilities are, is a challenge for me. That's all I'm saying. And part of, you know, a prominent part of the proposal, which I think looks really, really good. I like it. I support it. But it is that fire station. And if it's a freebie and it replaces what we already have, I have no issue with that. But it's the uncertainty of all of this that is troubling for me. Having said that, I'm supportive of the proposal. I think it looks really good and I'm very happy with it. I still have questions about how the school's going to impact traffic flow and all the other things we've talked about multiple times. And we don't know that yet. And we, and we would get a, basically a free fire station. So that's a good thing. But I don't know what that means in terms of sustaining our fire coverage in the future. Whether we're going to try to have two or three. And that I do have concern about. So I'm supportive of this overall. And I know that this is only a first reading, but those are two significant issues that I think need to be on the table for discussion.
Okay, fair enough. Do we have any other questions or comments from the council?
What does the timeline look for this? So after, if we were to approve this first greeting, what are the next steps?
I spoke to the developer today. They've already retained their architects for the design. They have the soils engineers out there onsite, so they're moving as quickly as they can. Obviously, housing prices are up and it's a great market and they would like to ride that as quickly as possible. From a practical standpoint, probably a year, year and a half before we start seeing any action out there, it just takes that long to work through the the track mapping and all the civil engineering. The streets have to be built, all the rest of that. So it probably a year, year and a half, maybe even two years before construction really starts out there.
The approvals that would be coming in to more of the granular items would be sometime this year, right?
Probably late this year. You start seeing, for the remainder of the development, you start seeing some track mapping. You probably start, probably start seeing some of the elevations, as you recall what we did on the project before. You guys had some input on the design, the elevations, what the buildings look like for the housing as well as the buildings in the park. But yeah, late, late this year, early next year.
Got it. And then just for my knowledge, who, the qualified archaeologists and qualified biologists that we're speaking of, do those come from us or is that something that the contractor handled?
We hire an outside consultant that basically the developer pays us a deposit and the consultant works for us so that the developer is not buying his own results. And then we hire people that are skilled in those fields. We certainly don't have the skill.
And I'm trying to look at where exactly it was, but somewhere we mentioned partnering with the nature conservancy or there was a Riverside organization as well. When does that happen and who makes that decision of who we're going to be partnering with?
Tip, you're speaking of the agricultural conservancy? This is, I believe this is prime ag land. So as part of this, just like next door, they will contract with an organization that has agricultural conservancy land. Typically, those are in central California. And then they will essentially buy land for that conservancy to put in agricultural preserve. And that's usually done prior to construction of the first, or issuance of the first building permit.
Got it.
One more question, Phil. One more question, Phil. Uh what what's the timetable on Redlands School District making decisions about what's gonna work for them or not work for them? Are they in control of that timetable?
That red, it's it's their site, they are a an independent um entity that we cannot force them, just like they cannot force us. Um down to the point that we can't even, we can't even force them on what they're going to build on the site or how it's as if it's a school, what that school looks like. Um just like they can't, they can't tell us what to do with our site.
And what's what's the communication channel like? Is it collaborative or totally independent?
Um no, we've we've got a good relationship with the school district and they've they've worked with us on some projects. It just, at this point, there's there's nothing going on there and there's no plans for anything going on there, so there's really nothing to to discuss on it.
Although I think.
But that's hard for me to believe when there's, when we've got these these big developments going in all around California Avenue, and they're not thinking about what their school district is gonna look like.
Uh I, real quick, let me jump in and I'll say that uh, you know, I I think years ago, we had um a little less communication, but I have to have to give a lot of credit to Dusty. Um he established some channels in the last couple of years, and and I think I think we've got some good connections over there now. The superintendent's a a pretty squared away gentleman and um so I I think we have as much communication as we can possibly have. I think it's good. I think we have a good relationship. Uh I think Dusty is a big part of that and uh, but the reality is is I I think it all comes down to dollars and cents for them, so um as a school district, it's not about Loma Linda, it's about Redlands and Highland and everybody else that's included, so if they don't see um you know, a pathway or need for for those particular services at this point, they're not gonna, they're not gonna start building, and I don't. I I like everybody else, I think everybody's looking at budgets right now, so um that's entirely up to them, but I think we have a good relationship, Ron.
Okay, thank you.
And I think from a practical standpoint with the school district, their their building is is tied to development impact fees, and those fees are not paid until the permits are pulled. So they they their school building has to follow behind the house building just from a a practical standpoint of the way the money flows.
Yeah. And that makes sense. That makes sense. Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Measure four point three and four dash four?
Was that a motion?
It was a question.
You might have to restate it, because I think we're covering each other.
What's the difference between mitigation measure four point four dash three and four point four dash four? So one's mentioning the Frank Adobe, and then the other is mentioning the Frank Ranch Ranch structure.
Uh one is the Adobe, one is the Adobe building that uh we've we've already talked about, that's down along Mission Road. There's also a pole barn kinda to the, a little bit north and and west of that. That's the ranch structure.
Is that visible from the road?
Uh if you look really hard, it's kind of buried back behind trees and houses and stuff.
Okay, do we uh have any other questions or do we have a motion?
Yeah, I I can move it.
Um.
Do I do I need to read it out?
There are three parts of the recommended action that are identified on the agenda. You may want to reference each of those in one.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve them, item H one on two and three on the agenda, which is uh certificate of appropriate, uh one, I'm sorry, one A, B, and C, which is uh certificate of appropriateness for precise plan of design application number P one fifty six. And in so doing, determine the project is exempt from the environmental, California Environmental Quality Act, ratify the certificate of appropriateness, and approve the precise plan of design number P twenty one fifty six. Is that good?
Sounded good to me. I think we're just waiting to see if we'll have a second.
Oh, okay.
Second.
There goes Dusty. Madam Clerk, would you uh call the roll, please?
Thank you. The motion is to determine that the project is exempt from CEQA, ratify the certificate of appropriateness, and approve precise plan of design number P dash twenty dash one fifty six pursuant to the staff report and the findings and conditions um contained um therein. Uh Councilman Leonard.
Hi.
Councilman Chindall.
Hi.
Councilman Rixby.
Yes.
Mayor for temporary daily.
Ayla, yes.
And Mayor Duper.
Yes.
Thank you. It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh we will now move it on to our second public hearing of the night, which will be a council bill to introduce the first reading instead of second reading for uh repealing the East Valley corridor specific plan. Um and this is all, again, related to area D. Not sure if Conrad or.
Yeah, I'll I'll hit this. So you you guys have a fairly large packet of documents. Um and what this, what this really is, is uh house cleaning and a little bit of an overhaul of what we've done with the zoning. So there's multiple pieces to this. It's kind of like um analogous to cleaning out the garage after about twenty years. So the biggest, the biggest portion is there was, is a special zoning district along Redlands Boulevard. It was created about twenty years ago in a cooperation between Redlands, Colton, San Bernardino, and Loma Linda. In that time, Redlands, Colton, San Bernardino have all abandoned that zoning plan. And we are still the only ones still upholding it, which is a different, similar but different to the rest of the zoning in the city, and it's it's, nothing is is really crazy or substantial, but you know, some things have a five-foot setback where other things have a seven-foot setback, and some things require three parking spaces and other things require four parking spaces and just kind of, it's inconsistent and very difficult to manage um in in the development process. So what we're looking to do on the the East Valley corridor portion is to uh make the East Valley corridor consistent with the city city zoning. So if it's East Valley corridor commercial, it becomes city commercial, East Valley corridor residential becomes city residential, and we have the same zoning standards. The zoning will not change just the standards. And they they really are more annoying differences than substantial differences. Um the sec, the second piece is, we're looking at the the general plan land use element and the zoning map. Um right now, we have two two documents that govern planning throughout the city. One is is the zoning map, which is when you want to build something, what zone are you in and what can you build? And then the general plan is a document that is fairly forward-looking and kind of gives guidance to what we plan to be out there in the future. At this point, those two documents are very inconsistent. So we have areas that are residential zone, that are commercial, general planned, um higher zoning than low and lower general plan densities. It it's, it becomes very problematic to try and put that together. So what we're doing is we're creating essentially a one-map system where the zoning and the general plan map um are are essentially the same document, and that any inconsistencies are resolved throughout that. And um there's, there's a bunch of little projects, little corners of the city, single lots um that that get a little bit of adjustment, is zone change, and when we have done a zone change is we've changed it to be consistent with the general plan and consistent with what's actually there. So we're not taking something that is a a commercial, a commercial area and saying, well, we want residential in there and tear it down or anything. We're really trying to to make everything consistent across the board and then apply that and and clean clean things up. And then the last piece, over the last two decades, uh we we make changes to the development code, we make changes to the city code, and there's multiple references across multiple pieces of the code. And we'll change one and those, the changes don't necessarily get caught up across other spots where they're referenced, so we've gone back through the entire code and cleaned up all those internal references, so we're not referring to things that don't exist or that are obsolete or they're inconsistent um with what's going on in the city. Uh we've got Jeff Hamilton, who was our consultant who uh worked with us on this extensively. He now knows the the city code and the general plan better than we do. And um he can, he can answer any specific questions that that we have on that.
My question is, uh Mr. City Attorney, how do we make a motion to cover all of that? Rich, are you there?
I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute.
Oh, okay. No, I I so uh we're cleaning up a bunch of stuff and I I respect that and we need to do it, but I don't know how to make a motion to approve everything that uh um Conrad just described.
Uh I would uh look at your agenda.
I'm looking at it.
Items two, A, B, C, and D encompass everything that was discussed, but uh we do need to have the, complete the public hearing and then uh you could make that motion.
Uh okay, so list each of the council bills uh on the agenda.
Yes.
All right. Go ahead, Phil.
Oh, Jeff Hamilton is going to start the presentation.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, um as Conrad outlined for you, there are several parts of what's going on tonight. We're trying to clean up references to the East Valley corridor specific plan and and repeal that. We're gonna clean up some um language and uh the map in the land use element so that it's consistent with the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. We're gonna bring the two maps together into a one-map system, and then we're gonna make a bunch of amendments to the municipal code to implement or bring in the East Valley corridor uh requirements into the code and then correct all the inconsistencies and sort of grammar and 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 uh difficulties with administering the code that staff has discovered over the last many years. This is um, and this 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 next slide, slide two, basically just amend or documents what I just described to you. It it, the one additional item is these are fairly extensive changes both to the code, the general plan and the map. And as part of this, the environmental, an environmental review was prepared. It's it's an addendum to an existing EIR for the general plan. This is addendum number two to the EIR for the general plan, so that is the environmental document that you'll be asked to sort of certify and adopt as part of the other elements of your of your legislative actions. Next slide. As Conrad ta-talked about, the East Valley corridor plan was developed quite a long time in the past. It has a bunch of separate rules, and staff has found it increasingly difficult to make sure that the right rules are being applied to properties and and simply just outdated. The the, there are references in the municipal code to updated zones like agricultural estates that don't actually exist in the co-in, on the map anymore. The zoning map doesn't reflect measure V provisions. And all of these changes need, have been uh addressed by the amendments and revisions that are before you tonight. Next slide. And as we've talked about, the E-East Valley corridor plan is going to be repealed. The provisions of the plan essentially are being being brought into the municipal code, so nothing's really being lost except the cumbersome uh nature of having a separate document that has to be referred for referred to by staff. Next slide. So the existing land use and zoning maps, just visually, you can see that there's significant differences, different colors, there's different boundaries. Next slide. And so we're gonna be changing this to make them essentially, the the maps will look identical. They'll have different legends, so the zoning map will have a different set of categories than a slightly different set of categories than the than the land use map in the in the in the land use element. But visually, for purposes of evaluating what which uh piece of property is in which area or which zone, they're identical. Kyle, go ahead and click. This is the legend for this.
I'm hearing mention of a slide, uh who's uh, who's doing the PowerPoint?
Our IT, uh your IT person, Kyle, is actually running the PowerPoint. That's why I'm asking him to click and move forward.
Got it. Kyle was at on the seat of Loma Linda. Zoom?
Sorry, yeah, yeah. You have difficulty seeing it?
Yeah, am I the only one that can't see it?
I'm I'm seeing it.
I see it fine.
I see it also.
Got it. That's just me.
You, you, you also have a hard copy in front of you too. We delivered it to to your house.
Yeah, that's what I'm going based off of.
Okay.
Just wanted to see if we were all having the same issue. Sorry, go ahead and continue.
Okay, so yeah, the the maps are attachments to the map itself, I think is an attachment to, should be a council bill two twenty twenty one oh two, which is are the zone changes being proposed to the zoning map. Um it it may also be attached to council bill twenty twenty one oh one, which is our changes to the land use map. So you should be able to see the draft for the proposed land use helmet map in council bill twenty twenty one oh one and the zoning map as part of twenty twenty one oh two. So we've got, on the zoning map, we've got all the categories down the right. We we're seeing the special planning areas. We're s, and you we see the the um, some of the hillside zones that were adopted as part of uh measure V down in the southern part of the city. Go ahead, click Kyle. And click again. Now, you can see the land use map. The map itself, the boundaries of the map, the colors, those didn't change. As I said, the map is going to be identical, and this is gonna help staff be able to administer it more readily, more easily, more accurately. But the categories over in the right and the legend changed somewhat between the two maps, because they just have to be a little bit different for purposes of land use element than the zoning ordinance. But in terms of the allowed land uses, the allowed uh land use designations, the zoning designations, when staff looks them up, they're consistent between the two documents. So there's no doubt as to whether a property is, if it, you know, what the zoning is, it's always gonna be the same in both. The designation is gonna be the same across the two maps. And it really will be, in effect, one map. Go ahead and click Kyle. So this image shows the affected properties that are going to be rezoned in the East Valley corridor area. Most of them obviously are along Redlands Boulevard, but there's also some properties on the east side of the city that are in the East Valley corridor, but that are a combination of variety of different zonings. There's a total of four hundred and sixty properties that are gonna be changed in these areas. Go ahead and click. There's also twenty eight properties down in the southern part of the city on the border between the hillside. They're gonna be changed from current R one zoning to hillside uh residential. And this uh this affects or this implements portions of the growth management, uh you know, growth measure V. Go ahead and click. Down in the southeast corner of the city, there's fifty three properties being rezoned from PC to R three because um staff has found it difficult to sort of implement and and manage the PC provisions, because they're sort of unique to each development. So in this particular case, in this particular subdivision, staff knows that this was all developed at the R three standard. So it's gonna be rezoned to R three, so then if there are future requests for building permits or or proposals to change properties, it'll be easier to staff to know exactly what the standards are for these properties. exactly what the standards are for these properties. Go ahead and click. There's 339 similar properties that were developed at R1 standard. They're, they're currently zoned PC. They're going to be rezoned to R1s. Again, this will just enable staff to better manage any future development proposals or, or building permit applications for those properties. Click. There are 1,025 properties being rezoned from R3 to R3 PD and from PC to PC PD. A lot of these are in the, uh, area of, of Special Planning Area D, including those, there's a large subdivision just south of Special Planning Area D. And then there are other properties sort of scattered throughout the, throughout the city. The R3 PD properties. You can see them now highlighted in and around Special Planning Area D. Go ahead and click Kyle. Then there's these others that are R3 and being moved to PD in the sort of the middle part of the city. And then some R3 being to R3 PD in the, in the central part of the city. The reason we're adding or making sure they're changed specifically to the PD overlay is, again, these particular properties have actually special development standards, special development conditions. And staff needs to be aware of that. When they, when somebody comes in for a building permit, they need to know that they're, that they need to look for those special conditions for these properties. So that's why we're rezoning, we're, we're, we're designating them or displaying the PD designation in the zoning to make staff aware that they need to look up those special standards. Go ahead and click. Just beyond the city limits, but within the city sphere, there are properties that are currently being pre-zoned to C2 and then another 18 being pre-zoned to R1. These are not current development proposals. These are being pre-zoned so that if somebody becomes interested in wanting to develop the properties, they will know that these, the city standards apply and what those standards are. Same for the 18 properties being pre-zoned to the very low density criteria of the, of the zoning ordinance. Another 26 properties similarly being pre-zoned in the southeast area to hillside median density and then 52 being pre-zoned to hillside low density. These last three implement provisions of the growth management ordinance. Go ahead and click that. Okay. We're implementing a variety of amendments to the municipal code as Conrad outlined. These are cleanups. These are grammatical corrections. These are removing references to archaic and antique language. And this is also implementing provisions of Measure V. And it's also implementing clarifications and corrections that have, staff has discovered over the years that need to be addressed, like the fence regulations and the fence diagram. Go ahead and move forward. As I mentioned, we hired, the, the city hired an outside consultant to prepare an environmental review of the document. It was determined that because there's an existing valid EIR that the environmental document for this action tonight, these various actions tonight could be handled as an addendum to that existing EIR. This will be addendum number two to the EIR prepared and adopt and certified in 2006. The, the addendum, go back, thanks. The addendum compared the impacts and determined that there are no new impacts already, not already analyzed in the general plan, finally IR. So then only the addendum is required. Go ahead. Planning Commission reviewed all these proposed actions, all these proposed changes at their public hearing on December 2nd. There were no comments received or objections raised by the public. And the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the various actions, including the adoption of the addendum. So in summary, the amendments and updates comply with the, the goals of the general plan, the Grove Special Planning Area and the municipal code. Amendments and updates are compatible with existing and future uses in the areas. It's not being required, but findings were prepared and they're included in your staff report. So as, so staff recommends that you adopt the addendum, introduce on first reading and set second reading for the council bill to repeal the East Valley Corridor, adopt a resolution to amend the land use element and the land use designation map, introduce on first reading, set second reading and adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map, and introduce on first reading and set second reading and adopt the ordinance to amend the municipal, municipal code. Those complete my, my comments and my, and my recommendations. I, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Jeff. I, I just had a question for Conrad. I know we've talked about some rezoning in other parts of the city. Is this specific to the East Valley Corridor? Did we, did we maybe miss an opportunity to include some of that other stuff? Specifically, remember we were talking about Prospect and, and some of those other areas?
We're not, we're not touching those as far as changing their zoning. If anything happens with that in the future, it'll be tied to the housing element. Because those, those are, they are what they are. They're not inconsistent. They're, they're built to the zoning appropriately. So we, we couldn't, didn't have a hook to hang our hat on for that. We really just tried to limit this to cleanup only.
Okay. I, I, we could probably talk offline, but I thought we had some challenges with some of the use, specific use, especially right there on Prospect by the market, related to the institution and trying to clean up some stuff for them.
Those cleanups we did hit, yes. Yes.
Okay. And that's included in this or, or some other action?
It's part of this. Yeah, it's all, it's relating to the East Valley Corridor stuff.
Okay. That's all I have. It is a public hearing, so I, I prefer to open the public hearing just in case we have any questions from the public and then we can spend whatever time we need to debating it. So we'll open the public hearing at this, this time. Is there anybody from the public that wishes a comment on this particular item?
If you wish to comment, please write me in chat or use the raise hand function. I don't see any takers.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute if you're speaking.
You guys couldn't read my lips? So anyway, seeing we have no takers, does anybody on the council have any specific questions for Mr. Hamilton?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
My question is, can any of the zone changes, zoning changes be conceivably construed by any property owner as a taking?
We'll defer to the city attorney on that.
Well, we, we can't help what they construe, but we were very, very careful to make sure that we stayed consistent with the existing uses and to not put any additional burdens on the property. So that if anything, we allow a little bit more liberalization rather than constraint on them.
Yeah, I would just add that the intent of this is to clean up and to be consistent in applying the existing standards. So there, there would not be a reduction in allowed uses or down zoning or anything of that nature intended by these actions.
Hey, the, the follow-up to that question is, can any mistakes we make on that be corrected without being construed as point, point zoning? Spot zoning?
Well, yes. Spot zoning is, is a term that people use, but I've never seen it actually occur. Spot zoning is something that happens where there's an illogical treatment of a property inconsistently with neighboring properties. So what we're doing with this is to bring consistency, not inconsistency.
And as, as you can see, we're certainly, certainly have plenty of mistakes and we have a mechanism to clean them up. And so that we can invoke the mechanism again, if we got it wrong and, and pick up any pieces that we missed.
I think that's a good assurance that if we are missing the mark here, we're open to, to review. So I do understand the necessity of this and where we're headed. So I'm in support, but absent any other questions, do we have a motion to move any of this?
Question. For the subdivision on North Beaumont Avenue and east of Wager, what was the rationale for rezoning it from planned community to low density residential?
It was actually built to, how do you put it? It was created as a planned community just as a consistent development, all as one piece. But it followed the R1 zoning as far as setbacks, everything else. So if you open the planned community document, it literally has our R1 requirements in it. So rather than have two separate things, we have to go to two separate pieces, it's consistent across. So it's, it's R1 throughout the city.
And this is the area right next to the railroad tracks, right?
Correct. Going to between Bryn Mawr and the railroad tracks north of Beaumont Avenue, that wedge.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council or staff? Otherwise, I would say we could entertain a motion.
I'm willing to move it, but I may need some help from the city attorney. So
I, I actually think
Move either the council bills?
I think a great, a great way to summarize it is just this last slide that they have up. Just reading kind of all those bullet points on that last slide. I, I know, I think somebody asked that question earlier. I think you might have asked that question earlier, but I think that's a great way to summarize it.
Yeah.
That would be good.
My, my, my screen's gone blank, so I don't see what's up on the screen. But I, I'm looking at my, my agenda. So I would move Council Bill zero dash two zero two one dash oh one, Council Bill R two zero two one dash oh one, Council Bill zero dash two zero two ones dash zero two, and Council Bill zero dash two zero two one dash zero three. Does that work, Rich?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. Barbara?
Okay, the motion is to adopt the addendum to the general plan EIR for the following actions. Introducing on first reading, setting second reading for, actually for February nine for Council Bill dash zero, excuse me, dash oh dash 2021 dash zero one, an ordinance to repeal the East Valley specific corridor, the East Valley Corridor specific plan, adopt Council Bill number R dash 2021 dash oh one, amending the land used element and land used designation map of the general plan. Introduce on first reading and set the second reading for February nine for Council Bill number oh dash 2021 dash oh two, amending the zoning map and introduce on first reading and set the second reading for February nine for Council Bill number oh dash 2021 dash oh three, amending the municipal code. Councilman Jendal?
Hi.
Councilman Leonard? You're on mute. Councilman Leonard?
The little spacebar thing isn't working like it's supposed to. Uh, yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley?
Daley, yes.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you. Passage unanimously.
Thank you all very much for that. And moving on to item number three, a public hearing on our historical commission.
This was listed on the agenda as a city attorney item, although it's something that you brought up at the last meeting. And I did prepare a brief ordinance to address the issue. As requested, the ordinance would increase the membership of the Historical Commission. And the number shall be determined by city council resolution. And a quorum would be a majority of those appointed. So it is before you for your consideration.
So just to recap, and others can help me with this if, if need be, but part of the thought process in this was that we had several applicants to our historical commission last month. And we actually briefly discussed both at the council meeting and offline, I think some of us individually, about, about the attendance and membership on some of these committees. And so the idea was to expand the membership to ensure that we would have a quorum when we needed to have a quorum. And I think most of this came in the direction of the council. So I'm curious to hear if anybody has any issue or challenge or if we can just move it.
So three questions on my end.
We also need a public hearing.
Oh, very good point. So let's open the public hearing and start that way again because we'll probably have more conversation on our side. So anyone wishing to speak, please notify our IT.
Mayor Duper, I do have the email comment from Mr. Joe Frank that he says he does not see the real need to increase the number of members from nine to 11, just as was stated at the last meeting to be fair. He feels that fair would be to seat him as he has shown more interest over the last several years and let the other two wait until there's an opening. And he indicates as outlined in a letter to the city council members dated 12/21/20. I have not, I have not seen that, but that is his comment.
Okay. And I, and I do know that he sent all of us an individual email or a separate email in December with his, with the same comments. However, I don't think he knows or understands, or knows about several of the other applicants or the other two applicants that were on the table last month had actually applied in previous years. And so we haven't had any openings. And so all those have been on hold. And it wasn't until last month that those three applicants that were brought forward to us. So anyway, I'm interested to hear what, what we think as a council in terms of what's appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, I would just mention again that the proposed ordinance does not require any certain number or that we increase the membership at this time. It simply gives the council the discretion to change the membership by resolution rather than by having to change the ordinance in the future.
All right. I see Dick Wiley has his thumb up. I'm not sure if he's asking to make a comment or if he just thinks that's a great idea.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, Dick.
Okay. One comment that I have made to a couple has been that the three committees that I'm on, usually we had new members come on. And they will show up for a time or two and then they're gone. And I think anybody that is interested in being on any committee should be required to at least attend probably four to six meetings. So if they show that there is an intent of, of being interested in doing this. The other for our historic area, I think we need people with knowledge of the area of the, you know, the whole town, history of it, history about it, and everything that goes with it. Because there's a lot of things that seem to come up. People say, I didn't know that. Or I was unaware of it. Well, you know, there are books out there that you can read about some of Well, you know, there are books out there that you can read about some of it. And, well, I didn't know that. Well, okay. This is why if you come in without knowledge, then it's just, you know, your own interpretation of what it is at the time. So I'd like to see a lot more knowledge on some of these committees that we have, instead of just saying, well, I, you know, I just hiked the hills and that's about it. Or, you know, what was the, the area about, our historic area? Is a good example. There's a lot to it that I don't think is knowledgeable to a lot of people. And this is where, you know, both Joe and I are, at this point, saying, well, we'd like to have some of this stuff at least captured, presented, and available to the public, so they're aware of what's going on. I will bet that nobody in the, the council and/or maybe city hall is aware that my dad went over to Japan representing part of the citrus industry. And they came back with a comment, they only wanted oranges from the Bryn Mawr and Redlands area. Those were the only good oranges that they ever got. And it sort of shocked him that they can get them from anywhere in the world, but specifically stating this area for citrus. So there's a, a big start with this that, you know, which I'm trying to preserve in more ways than one. And I hope that maybe the council will look at that and saying, I don't know a thing about the, the other two that you've got, what their knowledge is or anything about it. But I haven't seen them at a, a commission meeting that I'm aware of. So that's, at this point, you know, Joe has got, growing up down here, very familiar with the area. There's a couple others that don't live here that we picked up information. We're losing a lot of people. You know, Paxton passed away a few months ago. That was a big source of information for that whole area along Mission Road there. And as these things disappear, we're losing valuable, valuable information anyway. So I would hope that, you know, you would consider this type of thinking. And as I say, they present themselves at committee meetings to say, I am here, this is where my knowledge and interest is. And you can see them before they're asked to be approved for a committee. So I thank you for your consideration on the time and, and listening to it. At the, when you get to the end of that, I'd like to maybe throw a, another comment when you get to the end of the evening to you about the other project. I just figured out how to get this opened up so I can make a comment. So about your first proposal tonight, no, do that later.
Okay, thank, thank you, Dick. Any other comments from the public? All right, not seeing any, we'll open it up to the council. Any other comments, or how do we feel about this?
I'm not sure how to get recognized here.
You're good. Yeah, yeah, jump right in.
Okay. I, I appreciate what Dick has said. I, I think he, he's got some historical wisdom that is useful. On a practical level, I don't care how many people we have on the historical commission, whether it's five, eight, 10, whatever it is. But I, I do think he raises a legitimate point about people that have some interest and awareness of the history of Loma Linda and why we even have a historical commission. So I've, I've always been a skeptic of, you know, anybody that volunteers, we put them on a committee, because you kind of get what you, what you pay for. And so I'm skeptical of just increasing the size of the committee, because we've got that many people applying. But, so I'd like to take this a little more seriously. And, and maybe the mayor and the city manager should interview these people and make recommendations. I don't know, I don't have any good answers. But I'm, I'm not interested in just anybody that raises their hand automatically gets put on a committee, because we want to please all the voters. I, I, I think there should be some purpose to this. So I don't have any good answers. But, but I, I think we need to, we need to identify people that are serious in their interest and not just trying to pursue a political career for the future.
Well, I, I appreciate what you just said. I, I can tell you in, in our, you and I started at the same time, in our almost 11 years on the council, I believe, almost in every case where we've ever added anybody to a committee, we've, we've pretty much ensured that they need to attend a council meeting and that we do a question and answer type of forum. And, and when, when we didn't have people attend council meetings, we just didn't make appointments, and we invited them to come back. That's my experience. And, and I would say we haven't interviewed any of the three people here. Although, caveat, COVID produces a whole different, unique set of circumstances for us. So that could be part of it. But, you know, I, I had an offline conversation with the, with the city manager's office about this, and it was indicated to me that the other two applicants had been applicants for a while now and waiting for, for an opening to occur. And because we didn't have an opening, that they didn't surface until just recently. And that's when, when Mr. Frank surfaced also. So it, it sounded like from our discussion last month that it wasn't about trying to please anybody. It was, you know, everybody thought there was equal experience and, and usefulness to add all three. So I, I'm not sure, whatever direction we want to go, I'm good with. And we can go down that road. I, I know the city manager's offices expressed that they are happy and willing to work with any of the applicants, and they, they appreciate all three of them. And like I said before, what I, what I've heard a little bit is that sometimes we have some problems getting a quorum to some of the meetings. And so maybe increasing the, the list might actually help that out a little bit. So those are my comments.
Okay.
In the past year, how many times has quorum failed for the historical commission?
More, more than twice, maybe four times?
I think I asked this question last time around too. The terms, they're staggered. And I know we have some opening up this coming year. How many do we have opening up in 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024?
I don't, I don't know, I would have to look that up. I don't have that information readily available right now.
We've never, we've never dealt with terms on them. They're just, it's like a Supreme Court thing, they're appointed for life until they reside. We, we've never had anybody look at terms and how long they're on. Planning commission is appointed to terms, but historic is an appointment as long as they want to stay. I assume trails and parks are the same thing.
Yes, yeah, and, and I would say, and how do I say this and be politically correct when I say it? But sorry, Dick, throw something at me. I, I think the value and benefit in the historical commission is having folks that have been around on this, in, in this area and on this planet a little bit longer than some of the rest of us. So how did that sound? Did that sound politically correct? We, I, I think, I think the value in having folks that are older and that have been around longer, and that's, that's unique to the historical commission. So I know we do that in some of our other committees also. And like Conrad said, the only thing that has a specific term is planning commission, because it's very similar to city council. But people who've gotten on have typically stayed on, because we want to, we want to get as much information and keep as much information from them as long as we can until they physically can't serve. So anyway, I think that's unique to historical commissions.
And correctly from wrong, 17.80.050, E means that there is no term length, right? So it's not just that they were appointed and they're never going to leave, but that's actually enshrined in the code itself?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at that too, councilman. And I don't see a specific term in the code, although there is a reference to a term. But that would be, again, at the pleasure of the city council.
What is the motion on the table?
There, there is no motion yet.
What is, okay.
The motion would be to introduce, first reading set for second reading, amending our code to, actually, from the way I understand it, it would just give us the ability to modify the membership as desired. This isn't specific to say, we're going to add 11 positions or nine positions or whatever. Is that correct, Conrad?
That's correct. It's, it's however many positions you decide you want, and you can come back.
Basically, how many people are interested, and that's how many we have.
And with, you know, as, I think we've touched on a little bit, historic commission is a unique thing, is there's a, there's a resource there we want to tap and we want to use. So the more of that resource we can get, the more information we get, the, the better it is. So we, we want to adjust, be able to adjust that. The council can decide there's, it's going to be a two-person commission or a 50-person commission. It's really up to you.
But, but, so we're talking about a quantity versus quality issue?
I think with the, the people that we have, there, the quality is, is quantity. I mean, we, we have, we have very good people on there, very knowledgeable people, with very deep roots in the community.
And so I don't have on my agenda who's currently on the committee.
Oh, let me just tell you what I do. Georgia Hodgkins, Dick Wiley, Mike Stewart, Dr. Kaufman.
Kaufman doesn't even live in Loma Linda.
He does not.
Oh, he moved?
He lives in Redlands, and, and like, same thing, neither does Mr. Frank.
Mr. Frank doesn't either, Ron, so we got to be careful with that.
What we're looking for is knowledge and insight.
Mr. Frank is the guy that emailed us.
Joe Frank? He came to the city council meeting before.
Okay.
Dick Schaefer from the university.
His fam, Mr. Frank's family has a, a number of years and ties to our community related to the Adobe and Mission and, and some of those other parts of town. So he, he, although he lives in Redlands, he's got an vast amount of knowledge related to the history of, of this area. So we have to be careful with that, because, Ron, there's our, there are already a couple of people that are not residents of the city.
So, so the bottom line is, I, I don't care. I really, it's, it's, I want people to take it seriously and not just use this as a stepping stone. But if they're serious about it, then I'm fine with whoever. That's, that's my perspective.
I think from the public comments that we've had, it seems that we aren't able to meet quorum. And as Conrad said, we, there's been a few meetings where we haven't met quorum. And this is with us doing everything online due to COVID. My worry is that where, if we appoint three more people, right? We make it to 12, 13, however many members we want to make it, and then those three or four members don't show up, we can't just keep increasing the number. In regards to these, we're going to have some kind of term length. So the people that aren't, or they just don't show up to the meeting, we're able to replace them, and you don't have qualified and interested candidates waiting until someone basically retires to get a seat on that, which it seems is the case with the three applicants that we have right now.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
As I read the municipal code at this point, all of the members of the historical commission do serve at the pleasure of the council. They don't have a specific term that's been designated. So they're not appointed for life, although in practice, we leave them on there as long as they are willing to serve. But the council does have the discretion to remove individuals, commissioners, if they're not participating or no longer wish to serve. So this, this doesn't address that issue. The proposed ordinance before you merely gives you additional discretion to raise or lower the number of appointed commissioners. And whether or not you, who, who you appoint after that or how long they serve are separate matters that remain within your existing discretion.
And the current number of people identified for the historical committee is what?
Eight. Or not, nine, sorry, nine.
Nine, but right now, eight, one, yeah.
All right, so nine, and we're talking about 11.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, the current code requires.
To make this a motion, but he, he hasn't stepped up. So I'll make it a motion, we approve it.
Okay, and we have a second.
Did we formally close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Dusty, I'm sorry, did you make a second or no? Was that just a question?
Somebody made a second.
Leonard did.
John did, okay, I heard it. I just couldn't tell which one it was. Okay, so we have first and a second, Madam Clerk.
The motion before you is to introduce on first reading that second reading for February 9, council bill number O-2021-04, amending chapter 17.80.050A, amending the historical commission membership. Councilman Gendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley?
Daley, aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
It passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to number or letter I.
One, one second. I, I had a nay, so no for that, so it did not pass unanimously.
I apologize, I misunderstood you, I will make that change, thank you.
I misunderstood too, I guess nay and yea are too close together.
Sounded like a nay to me, sounded like a nay to me. I just assumed my old age was catching up to me.
I apologize, I've corrected it, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Is there?
I'll move it.
Okay, we have a motion? And a second, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar. Councilman Gendal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley?
Daley, aye.
And Mayor Duper?
I'll, I'll mimic the, the mayor pro tempore, I'll say, Duper, aye.
Thank you very much, it passes unanimously.
Okay, moving on, any old business? New business, report to council members. Okay, nothing, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to highlight the incredible work that the city is doing along with the firefighters, with our public garden. So if you haven't visited our public garden, Uh, so if you haven't visited our public garden, it's on the uh, dirt side of Loma Linda. I definitely encourage everyone to go and just look at it if you will. Um, over the past two months, uh, the city and both firefighters have been working, working very hard on restoring the garden. Um, Loma Linda was founded on the precipice of health and I think uh, having a local community garden really speaks to that. Uh, so I would like to say thank you uh, from the bottom of my heart to all the city workers that have gone there to dig uh, and then the firefighters for helping contribute. Not only uh, not only their support, but also their labor uh, to make sure that we have the equipment that's needed uh, at the community garden.
Awesome, thank you. And uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Gendol for your support on that effort also. Okay, any reports of officers?
Again, I want to remind people that our Senior Center is still a um, uh, COVID-19 testing center on the second and fourth Monday of the month. Uh, the city staff, uh, Barbara and I and, and Diana, Robert, a lot of people went to uh, took the test yesterday afternoon and the result came back this afternoon. So within one day, we got it. So.
Well, what, what about um, the vaccination?
Yes, right now I have.
Because there's a lot going on with that right now.
Yes, I'm, I'm, we are working with the county right now to see if we can, we offer them the Senior Center to be a vaccination center too. So we are working with them right now. As soon as they give approval, I will let you know.
Okay, I, and that's important. I mean, I, I was contacted last week by Orange County telling me I could come down and get a vaccination. And uh, I would like to have had it in Loma Linda.
Yes, I'm working on it right now. Yes.
Okay, I don't know, Ron. I heard that Disneyland is going to be a vaccination center. So happiest place on Earth versus uh, you know, I don't know.
Oh, only if they give me a ride on, uh, what is it? Something mountain, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be the gimmick right there.
Well, I, I, I will admit, I went down to Orange County. I left at 4:30 in the morning and went down and got my vaccination. So, John, have you had your vaccination?
I have. Um, I waited a week and got the Moderna one when it was available. Man, I've got the first one and I have to make my next one on the 20th.
All right, well, you're a little bit ahead of me. Moderna, there you go. Okay, but, but.
The university was using Pfizer. They used Pfizer for about a week and then they shifted over to the county, I think. It's, it's all driven by the county. They started out with Pfizer and then they switched to Moderna when it got available.
Well, I've had a ton of calls on, on uh, on the county issues with vaccinations. So I haven't been able to give very good answers, but uh, you know, I ended up going down to Irvine to get mine, but they contacted me. So Dusty, have you had yours?
Christmas Day.
Oh. And you're the youngest of all of us.
Are you kidding me?
Well.
Surprisingly, that's true. By looking at the Zoom, you wouldn't know that though.
Okay. Okay, no, but, but in all seriousness, there are people and, and I've had people, when I walk my dog, asking me when the vaccine, when the vaccination is going to be available in Loma Linda. So uh, that is important. So when, when we are able to get some of the vaccine, please let me know because I've got friends and neighbors that are waiting.
Yes, sir. And the reason we have this Zoom meeting instead of in-person meeting is because we have a number of our city staff that that currently have our COVID-19. That's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not surprised.
So I want, I want to be cautious about have a.
Yeah, no, it's appropriate. It's appropriate. I understand. But, but when the vaccination is available, if you can let us know, because I've got several people that are uh, in regular contact with me wondering why we don't have it available for them.
How did Orange County, what did you do for San Bernardino County?
I, I'm sorry, what's that?
My question was how did Orange County get it before San Bernardino County?
Yeah, I can't answer that. All I can tell you is we've got some relatives in Orange County and they got me in there. But uh, uh, you know, I'm an old man and so I think that probably had something to do with it. But, but I agree with you. To get it here. We do, we absolutely need to get it here for our citizens. I mean, there are people that are really stressed out about this.
All right, well, looks like uh, our city manager is talking to the county, so hopefully some of that will happen here fairly soon.
Okay. Sounds good. I'll wait to hear from you, Jarb.
Yes, sir.
With that, we will adjourn, adjourn the city council meeting and the housing authority agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
All right, um, any comments from the public? Looking for Dick Wiley's hand. I don't see it this time, so we're going to move along. Um, well, move to the consent calendar.
Move it.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, Madam Clerk?
Okay, the motion is to approve the consent calendar items on the housing authority. Councilman Gendol?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley?
Daley, aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Uh, Duper, yea. That's Y-A-Y, so that's an affirmative.
Thank you. We pass it unanimously. Thank you.
Um, okay, so uh, uh, do we have any new business? Chair member reports, reports of officers?
No, sir.
Seeing none, we will adjourn the housing authority and move into the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
All right, any comments from the public? Again, not seeing Dick throwing his hand up there, so uh, we'll move on. Uh, move on to the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam Clerk?
The motion is to approve the items on the successor agency consent calendar. Councilman Gendol?
Aye.
Councilman Lenart?
Giddy up. That means yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Affirmative.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley?
Daley, aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Uh, yes.
Thank you so much. It passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Um, any uh, comments from any of the members? Seeing none, we will close the successor agency and uh, any final comments? I'll just say it's good to see all of you again and uh, very proud of everyone, all of our city staff, our council members. Thank you all for what you do. Be safe.
Thank you.
Okay, just to note, we have a meeting on January 26.
January 26th. We'll see you guys in a couple weeks.
Okay, does anybody know where to get a haircut?
My wife, my wife.
I got some clippers I belong to you.
I got a floaty.
My house, my wife will cut your hair.
I want, I want Conrad's haircut.
The number two blade on clippers, I'll loan them to you.
Uh, Dusty, I got my haircut today, but I, I can't disclose where it happened.
Was it, was Nancy, was Nancy Pelosi in the next chair?
No. But Donald J was.
Uh-oh.
All right. All right, you guys. Well, thank you very much. Have a good week and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Good night.
Okay, take care. Bye.